Good evening, my name is Ed Loopy and I am the Vice Chair of the Gostown ZBA. The Gostown Zoning Board is an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, the board has five elected members and four alternates. If anyone is interested in serving on the ZBA, please see Brian Rose for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting and tends to follow the items in order. The board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from applicants, abutters, and affected parties, and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a later meeting. You are welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Brian Rose at Town Hall to get the results. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application. If you are aggrieved by a decision made by the ZBA tonight, you have the right to appeal to the Superior Court. However, before appealing to the Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to reserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within thirty days of the decision and state all reasons why the decision was illegal or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to Superior Court. And with that, I'd like the board to introduce itself, starting on my right.
Dan Dusset, alternate.
Joe Femenow, alternate.
Galabright, member.
Vivian Blondo, alternate.
I'm Brian Rose, the Planning and Zoning Administrator.
And tonight, as we only have two members here and three alternates, I'd like to appoint, I can run all three, if I may, as voting members on the board tonight, so that we have a full five-member board. With that, we're looking for approval of minutes from the August 7th, 2012 meeting. They're available at the zoning department or online. Do I have a motion? Has everybody read them?
I read them, but I wasn't here.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay. And with that, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays or abstentions?
I have to abstain.
You're abstaining, okay.
And you are?
I am, I voted aye. I've been through all the minutes in preparation for the meeting and all the paperwork from last month's meeting. Okay, first on the agenda tonight is Leah and Joseph Walczko. Is that pronounced properly?
Walchko.
Walchko, Walchko, okay, thank you. Owners applicants are seeking a variance for a proposed twelve-foot by sixteen-foot addition to the existing fourteen-foot by ten-foot shed that is located five point five feet from the property line. The variance is required because a proposed addition will be located five point five feet from the property line, whereas Section 5.1 of the zoning ordinance requires a setback of ten feet from the property line for accessory structures. The property is located at Seventeen Heald Street, MAP 14, Lot 16, in the Residential Two District. This is continued from August 7th, 2012 meeting, and regional impact was voted on at the last meeting, and it was found that there was no regional impact. Is this, was the, I believe the session for this, the deliberative session and the public hearing was closed for this, right? Deliberative was left open?
It was closed, however, at the end it was reopened in order to allow for any public comment at the.
Okay, in that case, is there anybody here to speak for? Anything else? Any like to present?
Anything different than last week? The only thing, last time, the only thing I didn't mention before is that next to the existing shed, we had one of those tent sheds for about five years that sat in the same exact spot that we just built the addition onto. So, I just wanted to put that out there, that that shed, that, the shed that is existing was there for at least twelve, thirteen years, and there was another one in that same spot for about five.
One of those steel frame with the canopy over it?
Yeah, it's like a big tent.
Okay. So there was this structure there?
Yes.
Just wasn't?
Yeah, in the same spot that he just built the addition. So we thought, looked better than tent.
Or is there any foundation or any of the sonotubes associated with that tent?
No, no. He had like a plywood floor underneath that.
In reviewing the statements from last week, the existing shed, is it on a foundation?
No.
The existing shed, the original shed?
No, it's on, it's got a wood floor.
It's got a wood floor and it's sitting on the ground, or is it sitting on sonotubes?
Blocks.
Have any more questions? I remember this pretty vividly from last month, and after reviewing the documents, I don't have any additional questions.
All right. Nobody's got any further questions of you, or is there anybody here to speak in opposition of this request? We'll move to close the public hearing and move on to deliberations on this. Anybody have anything they'd like to add, or discuss, or motions to be made?
Well, I just want to say one thing, is that I read the minutes two or three times, and the comment was made that one time we had somebody remove a shed, and the reason we had them remove the shed is that they covered over twenty, they had less than twenty-five percent of the property there, but even without the shed.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why we denied it. And another thing is that, I believe right across the street, or not too far from them, we approved one of the applicants because they wanted to put in a porch, and instead of being twenty-five feet from the front line, it would be only fifteen. And I think that, I went to view it, because everybody said they wanted to do a site walk and stuff, and it's true, as soon as you're driving, I would say, north, or northeast, you see the sheds, the front of the sheds. I don't know if anybody went, but the front of the sheds. Then you don't see the sheds at all. But then I got out of the car, and I looked at the fence, and I looked at the sheds, and they, there's no zigzag or anything else, it's just a straight line. So, seeing how I feel about it, I want to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Yeah, I mean, and as far as the brothers go, I mean, that was one of the biggest concerns, was, you know, visibility from the neighboring houses. Now, they've had two opportunities to show up if they did have an issue, and.
That's what's my next question.
Yeah.
Their deck is right on the fence line anyway, so.
So chances are, if I had a deck right against someone else's fence, I probably wouldn't mind the additional blockage.
I don't see where anybody has any complacency on either side, so.
Right.
There was discussion at the end of the meeting last month about fire codes. Is there, and some of that discussion talked about conditions that the structure approved meet fire codes?
If it's a pellet stove in there, is that what it is?
It's, I think it's pellet storage, isn't a stove in there? It's not, it's not in there?
Storage of pellets.
I think it's pellet storage.
Storage, I don't know.
I believe that there wasn't any discussion about heating the unit with a pellet stove.
Right.
It was discussion of storage of the pellets.
My opinion on that is, people store firewood anywhere they want, and in this situation, I feel like it's, you know, further away from a house than, you know, I guess it, for safety, it's not too close to a house, either house.
So Ed, you would want the fire department?
No, they are only five feet off the, pardon?
You would want the fire department to?
Well, my, my opinion is that, based on the fact that the fire department did express some concern as to the fact that there was a fuel being stored in this shed, and the fact that it's only five and a half feet off a property, on a budding property line where there's quite a bit of wood structure.
Can I make a, just a quick comment?
Sure.
The fire department had spoken to me, not about this application in specific terms, but in, in general, as a concern, that they just wanted me to express to the ZBA their concern about approving variances of structures close to property lines, especially where there's some type of structure on the other side of that property line that is also close to the property line, because they all, they try to keep separation of structures, and that's their main concern. It's not necessarily the fuel that's being stored inside, or whatever materials are being stored inside, that may have an impact. But their, their issue that they brought up to me was purely on a separation of structures standpoint.
Did they express any specific distances, or?
They stated that the current setbacks that we have were essentially what they.
What they prefer to see.
Would like to see, and what the code really asks for, the fire codes are asking for. Now, if you, if you grant variances that, you know, allow things to go closer, you know, people have to start doing fire-rated materials and that type of stuff in order to meet the fire code. So.
Most of the variances we grant, though, are, you know, within the set, or, you know, exceed the setback, so.
That's why you brought it up.
Yeah, right, right. But I mean, historically, you just have to look back and look at everything that has been approved.
Yeah.
Right.
If you're going to start looking forward as well.
Yeah.
That's why they come for variance.
Right.
But I, I maintain the fact that they already have a shed there, or whatever, a structure, they added on to it. I think that the fact that if they put in a shed without a, another shed next to it, or a structure next to it, maybe we'd probably give it a second thought, but we've approved a lot this last, because of the pernacular area, and because of the size lots and everything, we've approved quite a bit, because it was, none of them are really conforming. I mean, a lot of them aren't, because of the years they were built without zoning.
Right, and then you think, I mean, as far as the fuel being stored there, people store pellets in their basement, in their garage, I mean, there's no, there's no pellet stove in the shed, so they're otherwise going to be unlit pellets.
I'm looking at page four of four with the photographs, and it's my understanding that the new shed is to the right of the shed that's in this photograph.
Yep.
So it technically is not up against the deck. The old shed is against the deck. It's just within five feet of the fence.
I didn't look for, I didn't look for the other neighbor what they had, so.
I'm just, you know, again, I'm looking at the aerial photograph.
Well, Mr. Chair, my motion stands.
And we have a second?
Yes, sir.
I want to, I just want to add one thing, and I'm still not sure how I'm going to vote, because I'm kind of having a tug of war here, but I did go see it yesterday, and what impressed me most, well, two things. One is that the shed is built very, very well. I really liked what's done to it so far. The thing that I didn't like, and it has nothing to do with the applicant, was the fact that the abutter behind him, they have their fence, they have their deck, and they erected another portion of fence on top of their deck, so that, so that the applicants don't see them while they're in their hut tab or whatever. And that, as it stands on top of the deck, is an eyesore. And so I can kind of see their point that they made about not having to look at it anymore because the shed is in the way.
One question, was there a permit granted for the first shed that was there?
Not to my knowledge, however, I'm not sure what the age of, the actual age of that shed is, and whether or not it be considered a grandfathered shed or not. I'm not sure.
It's my understanding that it was already there when they bought the property, though, is that true?
I think I asked that question last month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How long was it there before?
We don't know.
We don't know. We don't know.
Any further discussion? Well, we have a motion on the floor to approve the application for variance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Next, we have application for variances and special exceptions. Sally in it's Argario, did I get that right?
Perfect.
Okay. Applicant acting on behalf of Alice M. Fiore, property owner, is seeking variances and a special exception to demolish and rebuild a single-family home on a non-conforming lot. The variances are needed because the structure will be placed up to twenty-three point eight feet from the edge of the Piscatacog River, whereas Section 13.3.3.4 of the zoning ordinance requires a one-hundred-foot setback from surface waters, and because the proposed house will be four point one feet from the side property line, whereas Section 14.7.3.3 of the zoning ordinance requires, as a condition of approval of a special exception, that the proposed use of the non-conforming lot conformed to front, side, and rear yard requirements, and whereas Section 4.3 of the zoning ordinance requires a side yard setback of fifteen feet. Another variance is required because the lot has no frontage on a public street. Section 4.2.1 and Section 4.3, by reference, requires a minimum of one-hundred feet frontage on a public street, whereas Channel Lane is a private road. The special exception is needed because the lot is non-conforming. Section 14.7.3 of the zoning ordinance requires a special exception to develop a non-conforming lot. The lot is non-conforming because the lot has no frontage on a public street, whereas Section 4.3 of the zoning ordinance states that the minimum lot frontage is one-hundred feet. The property is located at 21 Channel Lane, MAP 19, Lot 16, in the Residential Two District. It is continued from August 7th, 2012 meeting, and we have already determined that it does not have regional impact. We have staff review. You want me to read that, or do you want to go over it? It's up to you.
Either way, it's up to you.
I can read it. Staff review, this application was continued from the August 7th, 2012 meeting to hear input from the Conservation Commission. The application details have also changed slightly, therefore, a revised notice was sent to the property owner, all the butters, and the engineer. An additional variance was requested due to this being a private road, there is no frontage. Questions were answered for that application. The addendum was added to the packet. The proposed house is located within the one-hundred-foot wetland surface water conservation, WSWC District for surface waters. Any application dealing with the WSWC District requires review by the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission met on August 15th, 2012. They discussed this application at that meeting. Section 15.3.7.6 requires the ZBA to make no substantive decisions on this application until the Conservation Commission has had at least thirty days to review and comment. Comments from the Conservation Commission are as follows. Since presented to the ZBA, the applicant has revised their plans and the request that was before the ZBA, and will be resubmitting the revised application for the September 4th ZBA meeting. Mr. Mitchell showed a revised plan that was dated July 20th, 2012, showing a four-point-one side setback in the corner of the deck being approximately twenty-one feet from the edge of the water. The Commission reviewed and discussed the location of the house in the impervious surface. The Commission voted unanimously to recommend that the Zoning Board of Adjustment grant the approval of the revised application that will be before the ZBA on September 4th, 2012, with the plan dated July 20th, 2012. As the location of the new proposed house will be less non-conforming, further from the river, and granting approval as in the spirit of the zoning ordinance. Channel Lane is a private road, therefore, building permits on the street will only be allowed by selectmen approval after review and comment by the planning board per RSA 674:41 .I .D. Due to proximity to the Piscatacog River, a shoreline permit will also be required to be obtained from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services prior to the issuance of a building permit. The town has received the shoreline permit application for review and comment by the Conservation Commission, and they have included a second aerial photograph. With that, is there anybody here to present for the applicant?
Good evening, my name is Eric Mitchell. I prepared, my office prepared this plan for the applicant, and I also have some additional pictures to hand out. In addition to that, I have a reduced copy of the plan that you have on the board here with just some color information. It's the same plan that you have, other than the, I have some colors which I just want to show you to explain what we're doing visually. It's a little bit easier, because there are a lot of lines on the plan. I might, I'd like to just explain to you in specific terms what we're trying to accomplish here, and then go into the, test for the special exception and the variances. The lot itself is on Channel Drive, Channel Lane, which is a private road. The existing building, as you see in the smaller sketch I handed out, is outlined in red. It's existing house with a deck on it, and there's an existing detached garage, that's what's in red. What we propose to do is to take down both the garage and the existing house, an existing deck, and put up a single-family house outlined in where the green area is on your plan. The lot itself is six thousand square feet, the address is 21 Channel Lane, and it does not have frontage on the town street, but it does have about thirty-eight feet of frontage on the private road, Channel Lane. The house is serviced by municipal water and sewer, and as indicated, it is in the shoreline protected, the protected shoreline of the state of New Hampshire. What we have done for the project is that the house layout and the decks have been shown as far as the requirements of the shoreline protection. We have added impervious areas for the driveway, as well as the walkway to the house, and on the southern side of the house, we have a drain to collect stormwater. We've also added some landscape islands in the front, and the large tree that's in the front will also stay. One thing that we're required to do for the shoreline permit is to, on anything that's being redeveloped, and this falls in that category, is that we take something that is non-conforming and try to make it significantly less non-conforming as far as the state is concerned. And what we've done in that is that the building area, the footprint of the two buildings, the garage and the house is existing, and we're proposing a building that is less square footage than what's existing there, so we're reducing the footprint of the building. And as far as impervious surface, we are reducing that as well. Because the driveway that was there before, although it's gravel, including the private road, counts as impervious, because we're showing pervious pavers for the driveway as well for the walkway, and we also have collecting water in a ditch line for infiltration underneath the eaves, we are reducing the impact as far as surface water that might run off towards the water. So from a standpoint at the state, I think we've done a good job in terms of trying to comply more closely with the Shoreline Protection Act with the redevelopment. The house itself was built in about 1940, according to the assessing records. There are at least two other houses further down the road that are existing. The property's in the R2 District, and I believe a 10,000-square-foot lot is required, and we have 6,000 square feet. So the first thing that we are here for is a special exception to allow us to build on a non-conforming lot. However, one of the conditions in the ordinance are that if you have a special exception and you cannot meet any of the setback requirements, then you must also apply for variance for those. So that's one of our variances is for the setbacks to the side yard for the building itself. In addition to that, as was stated in the memo, we are within a hundred feet of a surface water, and that buffer is a hundred foot, and we do not comply with that, so we need a variance for that. And thirdly, the ordinance, your zoning ordinance says that all lots must have frontage on a public street, and by definition, a public street is one that is that thoroughfare that's open to the public. Because it's a private road, not a public street, we're asking for a variance to be there. Everything that is on the lot today, the house, the garage, the driveway, have all existed for a very long time. The house being built back in the 1940s or so. The property to the south is a residential property. The property to the north. The property to the north is a vacant from the standpoint of residential. It's owned by the town, and there's a sewer pump station on that lot. You can see part of that in the pictures that I passed out. So that on the side of the lot where we are closest to the lot line, we, it's not a residential lot, it's actually owned by the town. One thing I'd like to point out in terms of setbacks, if you look at the red areas that we have for the existing house, starting at this corner, the existing garage is only nine tenths off the lot line. The existing house in this area is 2.7 feet from the lot line. And this area through here, it's 1, 1.7 feet from the lot line, and the deck itself actually goes over the lot line. I don't know, we did the survey, the lot line is where it is. I have a suspicion, after doing a lot of surveys, that some people have the impression that everything is always right angles, everything is square to the street. And even the fence that is put up next door, that was put up by the, by the town on their, for their pump station lot, actually is more perpendicular to the street or to the Piscatacog. So maybe at some point, someone actually thought the lot line was further north than what it is, but it isn't. So what we've tried to do in the redevelopment is to have a single-family house. The footprint is smaller than what is existing in terms of total building. We had originally looked at having it be 10 feet from the lot line to the south, and that was what I was on the prior application a month ago. But in some dealings with the neighbor here, what we propose to do is to maintain the 15-foot setback instead of having the 10-foot setback, so that that does not require a variance, and move the improvements up towards the lot line to the north, which is where the sewer pump station is. The main reason in doing that is compatible uses between the proposed building and the existing house to the south. Leaving the required setback is, I think, a good idea. Where we have to have areas where we cannot maintain the 15-foot side yard setback is actually adjacent to a public sewer treatment plant, or sewer pump station. So the impact from a residential standpoint is, is much less. As far as the distances from the stream, the existing building from the Squatacog, we have a retaining wall. The existing building is 16 feet in this area from the stream, 14 feet in this area. The deck itself, although it's not dimensioned, is about 14 feet through here. What our proposal is, is to have the deck itself to be 21 feet at this end, 23 feet at the other. The house itself is about 31 feet, so it meets the rear yard setback, but certainly not the 100-foot setback. The building itself would be a garage under facility where the parking for vehicles inside would be on the ground level. This is efficient parking in front for two cars to park as well. And the second floor is where the deck would come out, on the second floor, but the first livable floor as far as having facilities in there for the kitchen dining room and the residence itself. As far as, before we go into, before I go into the special exception variances, or any other questions by anybody as far as what's out there now, what we propose?
In your letter back to me, your information that you quoted as the new setback from the river was the 23-foot eight. And so that's what I had used when I did the notice. If it's proposed at 21 feet at a certain point, that wouldn't conform to this, to that notice that went out. So I don't know if you, if that's a necessary thing, or if it can be, you know, taken back two feet or whatever on the design. Otherwise, I think another notice would have to go out.
But what we, what was originally planned was, at the last meeting that we were here, but the plans did not get heard, we had an eight-foot deck. And the request was to put that back at a 10-foot deck. And there's the difference between the 21 and the 23 feet, is that the 10-foot deck is what they proposed. That is what we showed the Conservation Commission, and that's also what was shown on the plan. But I understand now that the, the notice itself being different.
The notice, yeah, the notice itself went out for 23.8 feet from the edge of the Seattle Quag River. So, I mean, I guess it's a technicality that, you know, I went, I went off of what was given to me in your revised letter that you sent back to me, and that's what, that was the number that I saw there, and so that's what I put. Not catching that maybe the plan might have been different, but if it's a, if it's a big deal and you want to keep that, I would suggest we delay it again and renotice it.
Well, if we can proceed on the special exception and the, if that deals with surface waters, we'd at least to try to make some headway as far as being able to redevelop the lot. If the board could have some deliberations on some of the requests, except for perhaps the surface water one, because I think that's the one that's impacted, I'd ask the board if they would do that.
Well, the, I would say the special exception wouldn't be able to be granted unless the setback issue can be addressed. That's one of the setback variances. I know that that one wouldn't, I don't know if any, I don't know if any of them would be really, unless you can meet all the setbacks, you can't grant the special exception. I guess the one that could be addressed is the one about the private road, or the, the frontage requirement.
Would it make sense at that point to just, to approve one and have four more floating out there?
I don't know.
Or would it be better to, to renotice? If, if the deck has to stay at 10 feet, we've noticed in, we've noticed erroneous information on it, that's the only problem.
I don't know if it's a big deal for the property owners, if you want to consult with them for a little bit or whatever.
I would. But as far as the, at least the question of frontage, we do have another step. If the board was to grant the variance for access to the private road, we still have to go to the selectmen. And so that's something if, if the board can consider that, we'd like them to, to do that. But if I may, I'll just speak with my clients.
Special ex, special exception addresses just the frontage problem. Otherwise, everything else we're dealing with is variant.
The special exception addresses the issue of a non-conforming lot being developed.
Which includes the.
Oh, there's this, alright.
Requires as part of the criteria that setbacks have to be met.
There's two special exceptions and three variances we're working with here.
It's just one special exception.
I see special exception.
Near the bottom, special exception's needed because the lot's non-conforming.
Right.
Because it has no frontage on a public street.
Mm-hmm.
But that's not the reason why they need, they need variances before they can get the special exception, because of one of the criteria of getting a special exception is that you have to make setbacks. So it's a little confused, there's a lot in this.
Yeah, yeah, there is.
So if they come back and say, well, take the eight-foot deck, then we can.
Then we can move forward.
Hypothetically approve it and with the accept, with the expectation that they revised the plan.
Thank you. The, as far as the dimensions of the building, because the house is like 28 by 30, it's a very, it's a small footprint. And the deck distance of 10 feet is very important to the applicants. We would like to renotice and come back for that portion of it. If it's easier on the board to stop here and continue and also renotice, that we will do that. But if we, whatever we do, if the board has any other comments, questions, or concerns that we, so if we can come back with any more information for the next meeting, we'd be glad to do that.
A picture with the lonely chair inside, what, what's the building on the right?
That's an existing house down here.
That's the Hunter place, or?
Yes.
Okay. Another thing I want to ask is, when we had the flood, did this flood?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So I have to say that by putting the garage underneath is a plus.
Yeah. And if I may, just to explain that, the, the way the, we did do a flood study, I looked at the flood elevations. The flood elevation is about three feet above the existing ground that's out there. So the garage, which would be a garage under, will actually be in the flood plain, and that, that's permissible as long as you allow for the floodwaters to go around it or go through it, although it doesn't sound like something you want to do. But the livable space is all, can be about seven feet above the flood level.
I think it's the best, best way that we build up it down there.
Water in the basement's better than water in your living room.
Yeah. Do you have another question? So you, I wouldn't say on Channel Lane, I was down there, you're the second home in, is it the second house in?
It's technically the third, but it does appear to be the second. The house you were just mentioning is right next to one.
Okay.
Excuse me, briefly, could we have your name for the record?
Walter Arriero.
You mentioned the pump house of the city, that was, I take it that's a yellow building there?
It looks like it, yeah.
Yes, it is. And the fence is the, the town's fence.
Another question I had, Mr. Mitchell, is that you said you had municipal water and sewer.
Yes.
Did you have municipal water? I thought it was just sewer that was put down there, wasn't it? And the water was.
No, we have municipal water and sewer, and there's also a fire hydrant.
Okay.
For right now.
I didn't know the water went down. I thought just the sewer went down.
That change your.
It's all municipal, there's a six-inch.
Change much, oh, okay.
There's a six-inch water right here.
Okay.
That goes right down through. And as far as, because we're on municipal utilities, it's a lot easier to redevelop the site. If we had a plan room for a well, plan room for a septic system and all that kind of stuff, it's very hard to do that. But we, because our, fortunately, it's on municipal utilities, we're able to move things around easier.
Also, I see that you're going to be covering less of the property now. I mean, if this goes through, then you're covering right now.
Correct.
Okay, so why is he going to come back now?
Because of the, the deck in the plan here is 10 feet, which puts it 21 feet from the water, but there.
It was noticed at 23.8 feet from the water.
So they don't match, so.
Yeah.
And to re, reapply with the 21 feet.
Would it be the, the?
It'll be renoticed at the 21, 28 feet, rather than 23.8 feet. It's to cover us as well as them.
So they'd have to move the house two feet?
Or, or renotice that it's only going to be 21.8 instead of 23.8 from the water.
Moving the house would affect the front, or the side setback where it would be on the corner, where, where it's four feet.
Right.
From the edge, it would push it closer to that.
If you moved it more to the right.
So if you tried moving the entire structure to accommodate for that two feet, you'd end up messing up the other one, which.
One in this.
Then would have to be renoticed as well, so.
Aren't they, that, that the whole structure's going to go down?
No, but I'm talking about for the proposed new structure.
But even if you moved it two feet to the right?
Now he's into the 15-foot setback from the side.
Yeah.
What he wants to do is conserve this 15-foot setback. The, the problem we're dealing with here is the distance between the, the water.
It changes.
And the deck.
Well, cut the deck a little bit off.
Well, that's what they don't want to do.
That's what they don't want to do. They want to preserve that.
As, as, as I said, keep it 10 feet, but instead of making it go all the way around, just cut two feet off or something.
Well, I, I think that is the solution, or make it eight feet. But given the, the house, the style of the house, and the fact that the livable space is up on the second floor, it's a small square to begin with, additional space, even though it's outside, is very helpful.
It's advantageous.
So the 10 feet is certainly substantially better than, than eight feet on the deck. And that's a, the preference is to maintain the 10 feet.
Now, just to clarify, the Conservation Commission gave us, or gave their blessing based on.
Based on this plan.
The 21.8?
Yes.
Or the 23.8?
The one to date.
Based on this plan.
That's what I thought. The problem is in the noticing.
Right.
So I just want to be clear on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah, and I based my notice on this letter.
Understand.
I'll make a motion that we continue to the October meeting.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any more questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays?
Aye. You hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
We're an aye. No nays. Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries, we'll continue this to the, I'm not quite sure what the date is, the October meeting.
Maybe before the snow flies, I'll be able to do something.
Hopefully before the snow flies, please.
Thank you.
Give a date for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, October 2nd.
October 2nd, okay.
Sorry, guys. Another month. At least you're having to wait for state approvals on your wetland permit and all that, right? Your shoreline permit.
Thank you.
Okay, then. Next on the agenda, then.
The board's procedures?
Changes to procedures.
Or procedures, which Kevin provided a letter to Brian with the attached editing that he did.
Yeah, they need to be read into the minutes.
They need to be read into the minutes. I will read the letter from, from Kevin, and, and then read the amendments in to the minutes. So the letter from Kevin, Brian, "At the end of the August ZBA meeting, there was consensus to make minor modifications to the rules of procedure, and I volunteered to type the few sentences to initiate the change. We need to read the amendments at two successive meetings immediately prior to the meeting at which the vote is taken. If read in September and October, the vote will be taken in November. As I am not able to attend any of these meetings, please add it to the agenda, expected to be chaired and read by Ed Loopy." Quotes, "The board has proposed a few minor amendments to the Goffstown zoning board of adjustment rules of procedure. According to the rules of procedure, the rules of procedure may be amended by a majority vote of the members of the board, provided that such amendment is read at two consecutive meetings immediately preceding the meeting at which the vote is to be taken. The following will be read at the September and October meetings and voted on in the November meeting." First, in the application decision section, subsection 3, public hearing, paragraph A, the chairman will read the staff's summary of the application. The clerk will not report on or read the application. With this, paragraph B will also be struck. Second, in subsection 4, deliberation, paragraph A, the chairman shall designate. Second, in subsection four, deliberation, paragraph A, the chairman shall designate an appeals voting alternates as necessary prior to taking any vote or applicant's presentation of the appeal. This is to ensure a full board can vote on regional impact and other administrative items." That's it. He also attached, from Article One, oh, attached one article from the June 2012 Town and City Magazine relevant to the ZBA. You all got copies of that in your packets this week, so I'll refrain from reading in any of that. And he plans to hopefully see us all in December. And correspondence, again, was just the update from, and the procedures amendments from, from Kevin. Does anybody have anything else?
No, not me.
I'll sit.
Thank you.
When's the next meeting going to be?
October 2nd.
I will be in the Bahamas.
Oh, do you? We're all BJs.
You can have the meeting there, maybe.
You could phone it in.
I will be there in, for two weeks.
There you go.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by...
I think so moved.
Oh, second? Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay. And all those in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? And abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.